We had a very interesting meeting this evening for the Planning Commission. We had an issue on marijuana, which has been before the city for some time now. Recently, the City Council appointed an ad hoc committee that had people from both sides of the issue involved in it. They came together, using some logic and compromise, and came up with what appears to be a very workable ordinance that the city can enact and solve the disparity, a lot of the crime that we're having with the marijuana and some of the other issues that we're having with it. It looks like a very workable plan.
And what areas in the city will be eligible for growing?
Well, the only areas that will actually be eligible now will be those that are designated as residential. However, the requirements are such that there's a maximum of six plants. It has to be on a lot with a permitted home on it, has to have utilities, in other words, one that would be in use. The grow has to be contained within a 10 by 10-foot area, or within a hundred-square-foot area, 10-foot maximum on all four sides, and all four sides of it have to be the same. It has to be non-visible from the public right-of-way. And like I said, it'd be a maximum of six plants that can be grown there. Plants would be registered by May 1st, I believe it is, and the registration would be good for one year. They expire on April 30th the following year. The idea of doing that is so that the city has control over whether or not it's being utilized the way it should be, and this is an enforceable type of ordinance, whereas in the past it has not been. We're very optimistic that this is going to be, for everybody's benefit, very workable. Clear Lake City Hall, Council Chambers, Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, December 15th, 6:00 p.m. We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Sleuthen.
President.
Commissioner Perkins.
President.
Vice Chair Hutchinson.
President.
And Chair Webb.
President.
And Commissioner Anthes is absent.
The full transition to legislature begins.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the world, a wish of saints, a nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of its proveral.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
I have not received any public comment from the chair.
Then we'll go right to the public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Medical Marijuana Cultivation Ordinance, Ordinance 175-215. We have a report due staff.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Can you give us just a second so we can get the technology up and running?
Can we get popcorn?
So tonight, we're here to talk about the Medical Marijuana Cultivation Ordinance, and we'll be asking that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the City Council. Just to give you a little bit of background, in 1970, the federal government passed what was called the Controlled Substances Act. That placed marijuana on the Schedule I, meaning that it had a high potential for abuse, and had no currently accepted medical use and treatment in the United States. In 1996, California voters approved Prop. 215, the Compassionate Use Act, to allow the use of medical marijuana. In 2009, the Attorney General announced that there was going to be a shift in enforcement of federal drug laws to M raids in California. Previous to that, during the presidential administration, there were various raids on dispensaries and others with regard to this. In 2009, they said they weren't going to do that anymore. In 2013, the U.S. Department of Justice established guidelines regarding marijuana enforcement, kind of adding on to what they had said in 2009, that for those states that had medical marijuana laws in place, that they were not going to be doing any more raids. And then springing here locally, on February 26th of this year, the City Council adopted Ordinance Number 173-215, which banned the cultivation of medical marijuana. Shortly thereafter, there was a referendum that repealed that ordinance. On June of this year, the City Council then repealed that cultivation ban and approved the current medical marijuana cultivation ordinance that we now have in effect. Recently, the City Council appointed an ad hoc committee to meet and discuss the current ordinance and to come up with a recommendation for changes. The ad hoc committee met for the first time on October 7th. Since then, we've had a number of different meetings, but on October 9th, Governor Jerry Brown signed a comprehensive package of bills. Together, what was called AD 266, AD 243, and SB for Senate Bill 643 comprise what's known as the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, or MERSA. Under this new law, it provides for dual licensing, where the state will issue a license and the local jurisdiction, which would be the city, will issue a permit or license to operate a marijuana business according to local ordinances. It expressly protects local licensing practices, zoning ordinances, and local constitutional police power. It upholds local power to levy fees and taxes. It provides for civil penalties for unlicensed activity, and specifies that applicable criminal penalties under existing law will continue to apply. It also directs a multi-agency task force to reduce adverse impacts of marijuana cultivation, including environmental impacts, such as illegal discharge into waterways, poisoning of marine life, and habitats. And at this point, I'll just take a quick break and ask our deputy city attorney if she wants, if there's anything she'd like to add.
And just to reiterate what Greg said, you're still allowed, under the new law, to regulate cultivation in any way the city sees fits that community needs. You can ban it completely, or you can regulate it in the ways that have been recommended tonight. There are many options still available to the city, so that's the key part of that new law that I think you should keep in mind. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, although I'm really familiar with those bills.
So the MERSA is clear in giving the city authority to regulate or ban medical marijuana cultivation, as well as to require a permit or license and a charge of fee. Based on the referendum on the cultivation ban that was approved earlier this year, there's a sizable portion of the citizenry that would like to continue to cultivate marijuana, medical marijuana, and we're aware of that. The ad hoc committee recognized that and is therefore not recommending a ban, but is recommending a much stricter ordinance that could be more easily enforced. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the existing ordinance is, and then what the proposed ordinance says. The existing cultivation ordinance currently prohibits cultivation on vacant lots, outdoor cultivation within 600 feet of a public or private school or a childcare center, outdoor cultivation within a mobile home park unless within a designated garden area or lease lot that exceeds 4,500 square feet, cultivation within any property with multifamily dwellings, and processing of medical marijuana. It also prohibits outdoor cultivation of more than six plants with a residence on less than half an acre, and then on up to, if you have 40 acres or more, you could, under the existing ordinance, plant half up to 48 plants. So the recommended cultivation ordinance that was put forward by the ad hoc committee prohibits cultivation on vacant lots, same as the previous, and indoor cultivation within a residential dwelling unit unless allowed by the dispensary ordinance. So just to be clear, there is a separate ordinance that oversees dispensaries within the city, that's separate from cultivation. It prohibits cultivation within 600 feet of a public or private school, a childcare center, or a public park. The first three on there were already in the ordinance, a public park was added. Cultivation within a property with multifamily dwellings, same as before. Outdoor cultivation within a mobile home park. The ad hoc committee deleted a little bit of the verbiage there, where it said, within a designated garden area or a lease lot that exceeded 4,500 square feet. They decided to recommend just prohibiting it within a mobile home park. It would also prohibit cultivation area in excess of 100 square feet, cultivation without a city-approved permit, processing of medical marijuana that in any way alters the chemical structure. Prohibited plants from being visible from any public right-of-way, or processing marijuana in excess of that cultivated, as said, property. It also prohibits, or would prohibit, diversion of water from any waterway, cultivation within 100 feet of specified drainage areas, including Clear Lake, Burns Valley Creek, Miller Creek, Alveda Creek, Molesworth Creek, and Cache Creek. If you remember, earlier in the presentation, talked about how the MERSA was concerned about environmental protection, and this is one of the ways we're trying to incorporate that. It would also prohibit cultivation within any commercial zone, NUR zone, scenic quarter zone, or beautification zone. We have maps on the wall here that identify what those zones are, and you can, planning commissioners each have a map as well. It would prohibit cultivation in excess of six plants, no matter what the size lot. Under the current ordinance, if you have 40 acres or more, you could have up to 48 plants. So this would limit it to six plants, no matter what. And it also prohibits any type of commercial cultivation. So now we're moving from what's prohibited to what's required. The recommended ordinance would require registration of all grow sites by May 1st of each year, and the registration would be valid from May 1st to April 30th. So basically, it'd be a one-year permit. Permission to, it would also require permission to enter and inspect grow sites up to two times a year in addition to the initial inspection. It would require a property owner approval to grow, so if you're a lessee, you'd have to have permission from the property owner. One of the things that didn't get, it was actually deleted from the draft ordinance is that the ad hoc committee did ask for a copy of the current recommendation for medical marijuana, to be a part of the permitting requirement. The recommendation must be issued to the legal tenant of the property. It would require proof of residence, so that if you're growing at a location, you need to be living there, that you have a permanent water source to the home, either through metered or well. One of the issues that we were finding on the current ordinance is that there were grows that were happening with people importing water through water trucks and things. That the grow site be enclosed within a single square fenced area, no larger than 10 by 10, and with dimensions equal on all four sides, or accessory fully enclosed structure with the same dimensions. So you could have an enclosed outdoor structure, but it could not be any larger than 10 by 10. That the grow site would be secured by a lock at all times. It would also require a six-foot solid fence for the fence ordinance and in compliance with the Clear Lake Municipal Code. A permanent legal residential structure on the parcel, so there has to be a home on the parcel that's to be run on. Setbacks of five feet from the homes and 10 feet from the property lines. And it would require $150 per year registration fee to help cover the cost of inspections and administration of the program. Penalties. If you fail to register, then abatement of the plants will be required. There would be additional fines per plant for failure to abate. Failure to abate and/or register results in a one-year suspension to the individual and the property. A second violation would result in a permanent growing ban to the city for the individual and the property. A $300 fine for failure to register before May 1st, and additional abate fines. And then another very major significant change is the existing Medical Marijuana Cultivation Ordinance is a part of Chapter 5, which is the police regulations. This new ordinance would be a part of Chapter 18, which is the land use zoning ordinance, and that's why it's coming before you, the Planning Commission, because it's a land use issue. Some financial or policy implications. The recommended ordinance would require individuals who want to cultivate, it says here, to apply for a permit issued by the chief of police upon certain further discussion with our police personnel and staff. We're recommending that the permit just be issued by the city, not necessarily by the chief of police. And I don't believe that the ad hoc committee had requested it be by the chief of police. It was more of the city, that was a change that was made that we don't feel is appropriate. The application fee is proposed at $150 per year, which would cover the cost of issuing the permit and several required inspections to ensure the grow site complies with the recommended requirements. And assuming that there were 500 permits issued, then that would be about $75,000 per year generated that could help to partially offset the cost of enforcing the ordinance. So what we're asking for the Planning Commission tonight is to recommend to the City Council that they consider amending the Medical Marijuana Cultivation Ordinance at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. I think that was my question.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners?
No, I don't have a question. I just want to make a public statement as to, I do allow my son to grow on my property. I don't allow him to grow more than six. He's 85% disabled, and I just want to make the public disclosure that I do allow that. I can't be near it, but I do allow it for him.
So how is the city paying for this implementation? Just directly through the ordinance? What's your...
We currently, this last, in this current year, we hired several new co-enforcement officers. We received a CBG, a Community Development Block grant, that pays for the salaries for those individuals doing that. So that would, the proposal would continue as long as we can continue with that funding to be supplemented by the money that we generate through this permit process. And may I correct me if I was incorrect in any of that?
And another question was the, you had a five-foot setback from the house, or more, do you mean?
At a minimum of five foot setback.
If not, going to open this up to the public. If you would like to speak on this issue, please come up to the podium, the microphone, identify yourself, and speak into the microphone.
Hi, I'm Bob McCorry from Clear Lake, Lex Luger Drive. And, I have a question on the third page of the ordinance that describes marijuana being openly cultivated on or not provided a lock with approved residential use as defined below. And it's not defined anywhere below, at least in that instance. And then the prohibitions go into the various places, mobile home parks, residential 100 feet of lake, that sort of, or commercial zones. Residential use and legal residence, you mentioned in the narrative here about legal residence. That's not in here. Those words are not here. It just says residential use. So which one's right? Which narrative was it? Was it here? And my question is, in terms of residential users, you've got legal uses, you've got non-conforming uses, you've got legal non-conforming uses, illegal uses, all residential. What trunks what? Oh, Jesus, shouldn't use that word.
Yeah, we all know.
Which one rules? Is it the residential use, or, for instance, if you're within 100 feet in Clear Lake, and you have a residential use that's not defined, what takes precedence? The prohibition for being 100 feet from the lake or from a waterway? Or is it permitted because you have a residential use within that area? One of them's got to prevail over the other. So all the other prohibitions, where it says where it's permitted, but all the prohibitions over the rule of what the residential use might be? Am I getting through?
Yes.
Staff, would you like to respond to that?
He made a good point, and we'll look into that. Because it doesn't look like it was defined below, as you mentioned.
Yeah. It's his, would take priority.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak?
I live in Clear Lake. I was on the ad hoc committee. I also spoke before the City Council, when they first adopted the ordinance, and I pleaded with them to ban it. I still, my problem is not medical marijuana. My problem is where it's grown. And I don't want it grown in my backyard, and I don't want it grown in my neighbor's backyard. Unfortunately, the City Council at the time adopted an ordinance that allowed growing that immediately got out of control and has continued to be out of control. I favor the six plants maximum, although, again, I would prefer to see none. But at least it will help getting back the control that we need that has been so desperately out of control for the last two to three years. I understand over 4,300 plants were voluntarily eradicated this year, and I imagine there was another 4,300 plants out there that weren't eradicated, if not more. If you went to any of the council meetings on the current ordinance, or when we were trying to ban it in February, even the people that grow said, we need to get rid of the illegal grows. And although the 150 may upset some people, I think it's needed to offset the costs. The 10 by 10 should be large enough to grow your six plants, not visible from the street. The way the ordinance is now, you know, you had to have a six-foot fence, but the plants can't go over the fence height, so hopefully this will get it more out of control. I know driving around this fall, you hit certain areas of town and you would smell marijuana, and it had to be at these six plants, if not more. So who knows where it was coming from in the drive, but hopefully this will go a long way to bring it under control. Hopefully, if we're still having problems next year, we'll have another ad hoc committee to make more recommendations the year after that. The committee had a number of different people from the community, and with different thoughts and different favors, and I think we've struck a good balance. And I will approve this and send it to the City Council, and I'm sure there'll be more people at the City Council meeting, I would think. I don't know. I'm surprised that there weren't more people here tonight, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Vince Metzger, here in Clear Lake. I was on the ad hoc committee also, and I'm in favor of this ordinance as we wrote it. And I'm just actually going to ask, answer a couple of questions, and I thought I could make more clear. For instance, the idea of using marijuana. When you're actually sitting discussing with a number of people, you realize that smoking marijuana is like drinking whiskey. I mean, how do you regulate? It's going to be really hard to tell people where and stuff. So it's not enforceable, but you can actually make rules, like not in the park and stuff. I mean, I know, I lived next to the park. They drink in the park, although it's against the law. So a lot of laws are mainly there to enforce in case there's other problems. Like, for instance, if there's violence in the park and they're drinking, you can bust them for drinking. But if somebody's drinking a beer in the park, it's hard to place when it's going to stop and bust them for drinking a beer, especially if it's in a cup that's unrecognizable. So some laws are actually unenforceable, although they're on the books, and they need to be on the books for what they're necessary. The other thing was the cost. We wrote into this ordinance that some of the costs will be defrayed by the fees that we charge, but what wasn't mentioned was that in every community where they legalize pot, the cost of enforcing marijuana as an illegal activity is really, really high. And once you decriminalize it, these costs tend to disappear. So the savings is going to be in what you don't have to do rather than what you have to do. Enforcement fees, I think, would be adequate, not in the beginning, because there's a lot of stuff out there that's got to be stopped, which we have. And in the beginning, we're probably going to spend more money than we collect, but in the long run, we'll save a tremendous amount of money, just in enforcement and refining it as a civil activity rather than a criminal activity. The other one was the regulation on all sides of this issue. Regulation is something to debate, because for 80 years, it's been illegal. So a lot of different habits took place, for instance, cultivating in the private residence, out of sight, out of mind, illegal, but nobody was willing to keep your door down. Turns out that over the years, a lot of property owners, landlords, came into their newly vacated rental and found that there was tremendous damage caused by indoor cultivation. And when I first started on this issue, I thought, you're going to have to office, like having a house plant, like tomatoes. But in reality, pot requires chemicals, it requires a lot of hydration, sometimes you have to divert your water, it requires drainage, requires technical things that aren't appropriate for a residential home where people live, and you have to deal with maybe all the different byproducts of cultivation, whereas a house plant is actually good for your environment. Doing a cannabis plant could possibly be not good for your health, and it's certainly not good for your property. I know there's one landlord in this room here, he had spent $15,000 on a house that was improperly used for indoor cultivation, and other landlords I've talked to spent as much as $1,000 or $2,000, just because a clothing closet was turned into a nursery. So we ban residential cultivation for the simple reason that it's inappropriate, and we encourage a greenhouse in the yard. The other one was, oh, the other one was something that very few people actually are aware of, but when you follow the internet, you realize that worldwide, nationwide, even statewide, cultivation of marijuana, not just for smoking, for the pleasure of smoking, which is why I did it, and I don't do it anymore because I have CLPD. But I did have an abscess tooth, and I picked up some painkiller that was marijuana-based and combined with hydrogen peroxide, and I saw that abscess tooth. I was amazed. I was a doubter. The other one was, I got some oil that I wasn't sleeping so well, and I put a little bit under my tongue at night, and after three days, I had no more sleep problems. So what we're going to be confronted with is that in the future, marijuana is going to be a trillion-dollar industry. They're going to introduce massive amounts of products that are not smoke-related, they're not even, well, medicinal and therapeutic. And when that happens, all the communities that are opening up to this new industry will profit by it, by the registration and the regulation and fees charged. And I think that our ordinance was an excellent example of what a small community could do. And I know from my point of view, I was trying to write an ordinance that other communities could actually refer to and say, wow, these guys really took it on. And that's kind of what we tried to do, and I'm actually pretty proud of it. Even to the point where I'm arguing with a lot of my anarchist friends who don't think anything should be regulated, and that they should be able to make $100,000, $200,000 in the side, as was possible, and it was illegal. But now it is legal. They have to come above or they have to join the community, they've got to pay taxes, they've got to register, they have to meet all the requirements of any other business, have any teeth pits. I have to buy permits. I have an A T P S. I have to buy permits. I have to register with the franchise board. I have to do all kinds of stuff, which irritates me, but it's the business of business. And I think marijuana is going to be a business of which our community happens to be in the Emerald Empire. We're gonna see that Northern California will furnish some of the best marijuana in the world and a lot of byproducts. That's my input. And I hope you guys see the vision that we had on our committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Anyone else wish to speak? Come, come to the microphone and state your name and where you live.
My name's Steph Timm. I live in the city of Clearlake. I agree with everything that everyone said as far as regulating, uh, growths in the city and the city of the community where there's housing development, kids, everybody running around. However, you basically, it feels like what you're doing is throwing a net over the entire city. There's some people that own more than a housing square footage. They live on acreage, large amounts of acreage. And the current law that's in effect allows them to produce, what is it? Forty-eight plants or whatever the number of plants is for forty-eight acres of land. And all of a sudden, you take those outlawing vehicles and you say, "Because we have a problem in the city, we're gonna shut you down too. We don't care what you're doing out there. If you're following the law, if you're in compliance with the law, here's a new ordinance, we're not taking that into consideration." And it's six plants regardless. If you've got a wife, a kid, and they have medical marijuana and the state says that you're allowed to do six plants per, that's dead. It's only six plants per family. The other thing is, most of us have all, as farmers, have already tried to comply with the state in filling out all the paperwork that we need to make sure that we're in compliance with the state. As well as coming in compliance with the city. In this ordinance, none of that is taken into consideration. Because the state says, "We want you to be in compliance with the Department of Agriculture. We want you to be in compliance with the Department of Transportation. We want you to make sure that you go to the D O J." So, in the event that you have nobody on your property that's gonna do harm to anybody else if you're going to grow marijuana. And we're in, we're trying, small farmers are trying to comply with all the state laws that are given out. And then we come to the city and the city says, "Nope. Because you're in the city limits, boom. I don't care how much property you have, six plants, that's it. I don't care what the situation with your family is, even though California state law says each patient is allowed to grow six plants and everybody in your family could have a medical marijuana card. We're throwing a blanket over the whole city, done." And I always thought that when you did or you had an ad hoc committee that came back to the city council and said, "Hey, here's an ordinance we would like to revise." They come back with two or three different suggestions. And not just one that we look at and say, "Okay, this is the one we're going with and it's a done deal." There's no other options. And I understand the state gave you the right to do that. And basically, most of the small farmers wanna comply, the city and the state. But that is kind of hard to do when the state's gonna ask you for X amount of dollars for growth and the city's gonna ask you for X amount of dollars. And basically, we're really not looking at fighting the problem, which is the illegal growth within the city. When those people that want to comply. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Commissioners, any questions that you have?
I have a couple of questions. Are there, is the fee structure similar into other cities that have this kind of ordinance?
Well, this is a brand-new law. Um, so, I'm not aware. I don't know if this city attorney can help answer that.
There are several other cities that our firm has worked on ordinance that says that allow cultivation that charge a fee and you're allowed to, to recoup the administrative costs of administering a program.
Is the fee similar to this?
I haven't seen the numbers. I just, usually they're set by the finance department and based on a calculation of what the staff time would be to issue the permit and do the inspections.
Is that, is that why we came up with a hundred fifty dollars?
Yeah, we, we looked at what would be the staff time to go out and look at, uh, to do free inspections and to handle the paperwork announced.
I have a question too, uh, Mr. Chellion. Is this ordinance now better enforceable?
I believe it would be, absolutely. It's better enforceable than what we've had in the past.
Is it the same with our code enforcement?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Yeah, I wanted to know about this gentleman's request on more, like fifty or sixty plants outside the, well, in the city limits, but on larger parcels. Is that within the state or is that just Clearlake? State?
Well, our, our existing ordinance, if you have forty acres or more under the existing ordinance, you could have forty-eight plants. And we had it as kind of a sliding scale. So, if you have less than a half acre, you could have up to six plants. And I think it was twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, something like that.
But now with the new states and we're following the state's recommendation?
No, this is the recommendation of the ad hoc committee to limit the states.
So, this is just Clearlake?
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, it eliminates commercial growths within the city. Now, one of the things the ad hoc committee wanted to accomplish was to eliminate commercial growths and let people have their product, their plants, six plants in their home and have that available to them.
No commercial?
Right. Anybody else?
If I remember by the, by the current ordinance, according to the amount of property that I own inside the city limits, I would be able to grow fifty-four plants.
I think it was limited to forty-eight.
Well, no, that's, I have two separate parcels.
Oh, okay.
Right. Uh, one is over five acres and one's just over an acre. And, um, I only allow ever to have six plants grown by my son because he can get two pounds' worth of product and that more than lasts him a year. And he is eighty-five percent disabled. Full-on-the-replacement, bad knees, motorcycle accident, died four times on the way to the hospital. So, you know, he, he definitely knows how to grow. And it, it, it's an art. It's an art form. And he never grows just one specific string. He grows the different ones for his medical needs. You know, as to help him sleep, help him get up, help him function and that type of stuff. So, the six plants, to me, is absolutely perfect. And registering is absolutely perfect. But in bringing in the, uh, your recommendation, is that a part of a HIPAA violation? I don't know. That was one thing that was touched before about people having to present their recommendations. I have no problem in presenting it.
Well, if you're, if they're gonna present it to the city for the purpose of obtaining a permit, I don't think that would violate any, any HIPAA provision. Uh, we would be able, under the California Public Records Act, to withhold that information if any of the public want a copy of it. And there's also provisions in the new state law that mirror that to say that, that there would be a requirement to disclose medical information that was obtained in February.
In reading the two babies and the S B, I didn't see anything on that. So, I was just wondering.
There was a provision. There's also, the California Public Records Act, as it is, we, we would have a basis to withhold that because it's personal medical information. So, I, um, obviously, if you obtain a permit, then it's, that it discloses that you have a medical recommendation. But, um, as far as the particulars of the recommendation, definitely the city could withhold that information from a public records request.
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't close the public hearing long ago. So, if anyone else has anything else they want to speak to, come, come to the podium.
I have one more question. Is it okay to do both sides?
You want to what?
I have one more question.
Oh, please come up to the microphone.
During our committee meetings, we had two really strong issues that we debated. And one was the, uh, growing inside your home. We settled that, uh, by logic. Logistics, it just wasn't healthy and there was so overwhelming evidence that you can't really grow in a contained residential area. The other one was commercial growths. And I was told that we only had one property in Clearlake that was forty acres. And we had a lot of twenty acres, but we didn't really have any ranches large enough for agricultural-type growths. So, we basically banned it. And now I find out there's a gentleman here that's got fifty-seven acres. And we probably do have a couple of commercial plots that could be used as a commercial growth. And perhaps we could put into this new ordinance a special, um, maybe you can apply for a special permit or something so that we could have one, a few commercial growths. Now, I know we are going, we're expecting that the dispensaries are gonna organize some people and put together some interior growths. You know, they're gonna put together certain buildings and they come up the code and everything. People will be able to organize and collectively grow according to the dispensary ordinance, which is not what we're talking about. But there are a few people that have commercial growths that aren't operating under state standards and all of a sudden, they're in the city jurisdiction. That's what this gentleman brought up, which I didn't think we'd have that problem. So, I just presented to you. My only suggestion is that we might have a, an appeal built into the ordinance for certain properties that might be appropriate for commercial growths on special application. Just a suggestion. I just thought of bringing it up. Thank you.
Since you gave a suggestion, I'll give a suggestion. My suggestion is stay with the six plants. I still, I'm still not aware of a parcel within the city limits that has a residence that is forty acres or more. Uh, this gentleman says he's got a piece by Lorax. I don't know if it's in the city or in the county. But we've gotta get a handle on the crime, on the illegal growths, on the hundred-plant growths. And if we don't do that, I mean, maybe we can revisit. If we get control, maybe we can revisit that issue. But at this time, I think it's important and critical that we get a handle, get this town under control. I had another thought about it. If you can't smoke a cigarette, you shouldn't be able to smoke marijuana. Whatever they refer, whatever they call it, in the same place. I mean, uh, if you can't smoke in the park a cigarette, you shouldn't be able to smoke marijuana. I got some complaints from, I seem to get a lot of complaints from people, you know, about illegal growths and they want me to return them in. The parade we just had, a number of people came to me and said, "They're not gonna attend next year because there were so many people smoking marijuana in front of the kids, at the park, et cetera, et cetera." They don't wanna deal with that anymore. So, I know we don't have anything about not smoking where you can't smoke cigarettes, but, you know, we can revisit things and refine this ordinance as we go along. And that could include maybe commercial growths if we determine that maybe the city wants to go there. And there are parcels that might qualify. Again, my problem isn't medical marijuana. My problem is where it's grown and I don't think it should be grown in the city limits. It's curieux, but I'll put up with six plants. So, his suggestion was maybe we should go to commercial. My suggestion is leave it alone, leave it at six. It's still gotta go with the city council. And, uh, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
My name is John McGory. I live on Lake Shore Drive. Um, I've been here all my life. Um, my husband and I did, for thirteen years, we published the visitor guide. So, just to give you an idea, I'm sole real estate, work in schools now. I sat here on the planning commission when we came up with the very first zoning ordinance and we did our general plan. The things I'm getting at is that through property use, land use, you can abate issues. How do you abate the stink of a skunk? How do you tell a tourist to come to Clearlake when the smell is so bad that the first thing they do is check out? You can abate property by saying, "So many horses on a piece of property, so many goats, so many chickens." That's what you're doing. Whether it's commercial or not, you're saying so many plants because you are abating an issue and the issue is the stink and the cultivation and everything that goes along with the growth. And so, that's how you have to look at it. It's, it's, you know, if I agree with Dave Hughes, I would say zero. But at these six plants, you can abate it to the point where it possibly is not a nuisance to the neighbor or the nose or your tourist or a business. Try in October to sit at Cactus Grill and have a meal without being nauseous. Or my whole thing is I had migraines for the two-and-a-half months that my neighbor had not six plants, but then moved them inside. So, I, I, you know, you come up with good ordinance, not the way I would do it, but at least you can abate it with the six, the smell. If you allow a commercial growth that is gonna have that many plants, the odor is gonna be taking over for miles, not just within the confines of that man's property or the woman's, whoever owns it. It is gonna spread because you can't keep the smell within, you know, their ways. So, please, please, do not consider allowing commercial growths in the city of Clearlake. Thank you.
If no one else, shall I close the public hearing? Any questions from the commissioners or commissioners?
I want to thank the ad hoc committee. I think, uh, looks like all sides of this issue have represented it there. They come up with an ordinance that is workable. Thank you.
Uh, I only have a couple of comments. Uh, inside the city of Clearlake, there are some very large residential parcels. And that would be out in my neck of the woods, which is Lorax Lake. Tony and Janet King had a hundred and twenty-seven acres, I think, that got subdivided. Uh, might have gone into two parcels. So, the gentleman might be correct in owning forty acres inside the city limits. My ten acres is inside the city limits. You step over my back fence and you're in the county. So, I'm thinking that if you're out that far and there are no other residences, if you're doing it in cooperation with a collective or a cooperative, maybe you could get, um, a permit to do more. You know, like, if I were going to help Liz Bird grow and, because I've got the ten acres and I'm three hundred feet away from the closest neighbor, would there be a way to get a permit to do that? Or is that just not, not doable?
Not in the day, much proposed.
The only comment that I have on this is we've been fighting this now since nineteen ninety-six. It's a long time. And, uh, there's been a lot of proposals come before the city council. There's been proposals come before the planning commission. There's been ordinances adopted. But of all of the times that we've had this, to me, this seems like the most logical and best prepared ordinance that we've had presented to us. And I think that, uh, the fact that we don't have no growth in the city of Clearlake is, uh, on commercial growths is a very important part of keeping our city. Developing our city into a pristine city that it has the potential to be. If we don't overrun it with that crime and Lieutenant Sully can't, can't solve it all. He would like to and I know he tries, but... But do we have a motion from the commissioner?
I move that we recommend to the city council that they consider amending the medical plant cultivation ordinance at the next scheduled meeting. It's ordinance number one seventy-five dash one fifteen.
Can you just interrupt that for a second? Um, if you could also direct us to correct the residential use issue that was brought forward.
Correct and correct the residential use.
And to amend, uh, it to be a city-issue permit rather than a chief of police permit.
And it is a city-issue permit.
And?
And a chief of police.
And if you want us to include the recommendations, a required, a recommendation from a physician be required. That was, that was that part in red that I opened up the?
We'll include that.
We'll include it.
I'd like to second, as stated.
With the additions.
With the additions.
Okay. Do we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Sutton?
I approve it.
Commissioner Perkins?
Approve.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Aye.
Vice Chair, close enough. Commissioner Antis?
Aye, I approve.
And Sherwood?
I approve. Of course, unanimous. Really like to thank the ad hoc committee. They spent a lot of time and effort on this. Some of you, I know, have spent many, many days, not just hours, trying to come up with workable solutions. It's fair to, to everyone. It's not an easy thing to do. Appreciate it all. Appreciate you being here tonight. And I presume that most of you will be at the city council meeting when it comes up for approval, so I'll probably see you there then.
Very promising, a trip to Greece.
That's why I'm tough. Do we have a report from Seth?
We have a report from Seth. Let's see. Been working on this for quite a bit.
I'm sure you have.
So I think that's enough for you.
Okay. Do the commissioners have anything? Do we need to turn?